1:05 on Thursday, May 7. And our topic of discussion is the downtown development plan. And present at this meeting are Doug Hanem, Katie Capellini, Patrick Richardson, Brian McCann, Mark Frye, and myself, Mary Westphal. I do expect Lindsay Stowe will be joining us. Also from administration, Leslie Brining, both Sanford. Tex Silvernail is joining us. Also Mayor Stowe is with us.
And we just had Kevin Naylor join.
Oh, and Kevin Naylor has joined us. Also from Environmental Design Group, we have Michelle Johnson. And Ben, I'm sorry, I can't pull up your last name.
It's McKeman.
It's what?
I will type it in, I'll type it in the chat, because it's a...
That helps, thanks, that's awesome. So, you know, everybody received the plan. We all had an opportunity to have some input in that earlier in the year. And we received the plan from Environmental Design, which was the first step. We were looking to get that detail so we could make decisions about whether we move forward with the next step. And we all had the opportunity to submit questions. And I know that the team from Environmental Design moved forward with actually ensuring that they could get their hands on the questions and be able to respond to them. So we'll let them do their presentation. Bill might want to do some introduction. Lindsay Stowe has joined us, thanks Lindsay, good to see you. And I'm going to turn it over to, I don't see Bill even on here right now, but Bill or Michelle, you guys can tag team who wants to start right now.
Yes, no, Michelle and I did talk about this. And at this time, I'm just going to turn it right over to Michelle to get started.
Perfect, alright.
Great, well, thank you all for joining us digitally, our new normal. Just to let everyone know, we are in record right now, so just as FYI. So we're going to share our screen here in a little bit, but we did organize all of the comments, some of which we've already taken care of. I know that there were some ideas to add in some trail connections and things like that. We've actually already modified the report to reflect those items. We do have a couple of things to talk about, though, as far as kind of how some of these tasks are split up between the current phases that are authorized versus potentially needing some information from the portion that isn't authorized yet. And we're prepared to walk through those with you. So that being said, Ben, would you rather share your screen, or do you want me to share mine?
I'll go ahead and share mine real quick.
Okay. So we went ahead and organized, thank you, everyone who took time to comment. It was very thoughtful and thorough and insightful, so we very much appreciate that. But we went ahead and kind of took the liberty, as Ben's popping this up here, to kind of, there was a lot of common ideas and themes that we kind of heard. So we wanted, we grouped them. So please let us know if you feel that you had written something down and we're not grabbing that intent. You know, with the summary of comments that you see in front of you as we walk through them, we are happy to address them separately, but we kind of took the liberty of grouping them all together. So kind of one by one, there were some questions about developer interviews. We actually typically do not conduct those until we have a site plan with your redevelopment. And that way, they can see the results of the market analysis, plus the, in your case, it's an infill plan. So just understanding, looking at something and then reacting to the market analysis, understanding what kind of the science and data shows versus what we're showing from a site plan standpoint. That's typically what we have them review. We've never actually tried to just send a plain market analysis, so to speak, without that design. I'm not sure if they'd be willing to look at it, we've never tried that.
You know, Michelle, I think that I had asked that question, because I'm reviewing the contract. I thought that's what I saw, was that that was in this first phase. So that's what created the question, was I wouldn't know when you would talk to the developer, but it looked like it was one of the responsibilities that would have happened at this point, based on the proposal you sent to it.
Yeah, and I apologize about that confusion. We originally had prepared the contract not to be split up into authorized versus if authorized. So I think there's probably some things that are in a little bit of an awkward order that kind of weren't caught on our end to put it into the phase that it's been matched with.
Yeah, no big deal, okay.
Okay, so that one would be, you know, that's a pending, based on the if authorized. We had a few questions about the ICSC membership, just specifically if it was worthwhile. And our answer to that is, if you have a specific project, like you do, it is definitely worthwhile to especially attend their recon conference, which is not happening this year. It, well, that's not true. They have postponed it indefinitely. It was supposed to have started May 17th. It is a very, very large conference out in Vegas. If you have a plan and if you have a project, and if you have something, even if it's one building, it is worthwhile. I don't personally think it's worthwhile just to be a member, for the sake of being a member, if you don't have something specific and purposeful that you're trying to obtain, either from the conference or from the group. Luckily for a public client, it's a very affordable conference and membership. For someone like me who's private, if I'm representing a private company, it is an incredibly expensive organization and conference to attend. But on the public side, it's definitely worthwhile. So Ben, you want to go over the parking question, or I should say, do we have any questions about the ICSC component? And did that answer what we saw? Okay, hearing none, Ben, you want to go over kind of some of the comments that we got on the parking and parking garage?
Right, so the questions, I'll focus on the parking locations first, and then the garage second. I think the big question with parking, there was a comment regarding some of the quasi-private parking lots, one at the funeral home, and then one at, I believe it's the Edward Jones office, that's right next to the coffee shop. Is there a existing MOU between the city and those businesses that allow public parking in those lots? Or is that, is that something that's policed? We just didn't want to show technically private lots on the public parking map, just in case, you know, that were to cause issues down the line with those businesses.
I don't know if we've got MOUs with those. I don't think we do, but the mayor probably would know.
Oh, I feel like they, like the funeral home just lets people park there if there isn't a funeral home. I mean, pretty much everyone in downtown is really flexible, except for the old post office building, and he puts chains up.
To know, okay. Michelle, I can provide you more detailed input on all the lots. Kind of like Katie was saying, there's like the Edward Jones lot, they're a little touchy about it. The lots behind the Chandler and JDRM, they're the owners, but they do not police it. And so it's really utilized by the public as a public lot. And then the lot by our building here in the police station and council chambers, that's a municipal lot, as is the lot across the railroad tracks. But I can go over all that, because I have a parking study that we had done in the past and give you all that information.
Okay, yeah.
I guess we had, I believe, two different people saying, should we show them on the map as public parking? I guess that was just our concern. If it's not actually a public lot, do you want to show it as public? Or do we just kind of leave it as an unspoken, unwritten, people figure it out type thing? I guess, do you want it formalized in this market analysis summary?
I think how you described it, that you can't list it as a public lot. You know, and just the public lots that are, that we control, we can list as public.
Okay, that's helpful, then. Okay, it looks like you've had a bitter sit in the past and don't anymore. We had some recommendations of, hey, we've been there, done that, it was okay. You know, but it was a very different climate back then. You know, downtown was just in a different state and being. I think it's a lot more filled in with some pretty heavy businesses, restaurants, et cetera. Is that something, we didn't quite understand if you wanted us, if it was just kind of to talk about it, if you wanted us to remove the notion of a bitter sit? Or is it just giving us a heads up that, hey, we had them before? Different economic climate, different downtown at the time? I guess, trying to understand what...
Let me give some background on that, Michelle. We did have a special improvement district that was put in place probably 20-plus years ago. And it hired a part-time manager for it and did some good work for a few years. But then one of the major employers downtown decided that he didn't like paying the special assessment on his property taxes, and came to me and asked, would it be all right for him to try and gather the signatures to take that out? And I said, well, sure, the majority of business owners don't want to do it, because at the time, the sit wasn't accomplishing a great deal. And he did take that petition around, and it was taken off at least 15 years ago. I'd say, I am not opposed to a sit being proposed again with a better structure and a better mission. This was left over from studies probably 25 or 30 years ago, and was put in place by the previous mayor. But if it's a tool that we should be looking at again, that's a lot of time that's passed. And certainly, we could take another look at it.
I think, you know, typically, when we're seeing successful downtowns, Main Streets, et cetera, it's definitely a strong arm that has been very successful in other places. So I think it's something we can leave in as a loose recommendation. Obviously, you have to have the percentage vote to enact it again. So if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. But just for maintenance and things like that, especially with all the cool things that you guys are doing with Dora and the art walks, it might be worthwhile. So we appreciate that background. If it's okay with you guys, it's kind of sounding like you're not saying that you have to do this. We just think it's something to think about in the future as you're moving forward.
It certainly shouldn't be ruled out. If it's a tool that we should have, we'll take another look at it. That businessman is still here, but that doesn't mean we can't find a way to do it again.
Okay, alright. And then the historic designation, you know, there's a lot of pros and cons to that. Again, something to be explored. You can set yourself up for some additional funding. And yet, there's a lot of rules, regulations, and red tape associated with it. I know Mayor and Lindsay, you probably know about that quite a bit, as it relates to modifying, you know, interior and exteriors of buildings and things like that. So it's, it's a, it's a coin cost, I think, for a lot of people. Just, you know, do you want to set yourselves up for additional dollars because of the potential designation? Or do we kind of let that be, because it really does limit our flexibility on what we can do?
Quick question, would it limit our flexibility on the Ace Building? I mean, is the Ace Building considered historic? I mean, I feel like we don't really have that many historic buildings. We have a few, but...
I would have to go in and check and see what year that building was constructed. You can do buildings, or you can do districts. So it depends on how you want to do it.
Again, this is a tool that we might want to take another look at, and then with more information, make a decision. I have worked with historic guidelines and requirements in the past, and they can slow things down. But it's not going to keep us from moving on something we really want to do. And it may open the door for additional funds. I think it's too early in the process to start ruling something like that out.
Yeah, Michelle, I guess I'm kind of a little curious about the process. As soon as we go through the next stage, and you become even more familiar with what the opportunities for our community are, would you be making some generalized recommendations about what you think is right for our specific community with regard to some of these questions?
The bigger, yes and no. On a higher level, the bigger thing with the historic designation from a capital stacking standpoint, once we understand kind of where that infill needs to happen, and, you know, how vertical we're thinking about going, there are various, especially in the state of Ohio, we've actually seen some pretty strong financial programs that do support, you know, there's historic tax credits, state and federal. So it can help from a capital stacking perspective. At the same time, we're not going to say that, you know, in this area in particular. I don't, I don't honestly feel strongly one way or the other. Ben, I don't know if you have a different opinion on that, but it's kind of, if it excites you, and it's something you want to deal with, and then potentially open up, you know, some potential other revenue streams, great. If it's just putting on too much red tape and restrictive, that's okay, too. But it is an option, as the mayor said, it's out there, it's probably worth exploring. And the decision might be, at the end of the day, nah, we're going to leave it. Mayor, is that a fair?
I do, I, we're in this to gather information and assemble what our tools can be. And it would be, just like the sit, I think we need to have more information and be able to consider it as we go forward. To get a historic designation is going to take quite a bit of work and quite a bit of time anyways. But no, Katie, the Ace Hardware Building is not a historic building. Even if it was in a historic district, nobody is going to say, we can't tear that building down and do something about it. They are going to say, you can't mess with the Chandler Building, or with most of the other buildings downtown, without meeting historic guidelines. I think our concern, Michelle, would be, will be, we be able to demolish buildings? Say, the two duplexes north of the inside the five? If we were to have a historic designation, would those duplexes be protected by a historic district? And that would be a limiting factor.
Right, and that's the part where if you actually do a more formalized study specifically on that topic, you can kind of see where those lines would fall, what would be eligible, what wouldn't be, where that district would, because you don't get to kind of redline it, basically. You know, it has to be contiguous, and it has to make sense. So definitely something to consider. And obviously, in the meantime, you know, you do what you need to do, given where we are with current events. I'm not sure if that development is potentially moving forward. But, you know, if it's not a district now, you can do whatever you want with it, right?
That's correct.
So, okay. From connectivity standpoint, Ben, you want to go over kind of some of the comments that we had? There's quite a lot in connectivity, and yet we boiled them down.
So a couple of changes. We did update the report to reflect the addition of the Kroger and the River Trail to the Destinations map. So those are called out specifically. Kroger in particular, that is, you know, another walkable grocery store beside Sodder's. So especially for the new somewhat development going in, that's going to be just as walkable for folks in that development to walk to the Kroger versus walking west toward downtown. So that is a good thing to include, so that's been added. The Burnham Park and Plumber Pool language, we did add that to the connectivity section as well, because that's another one of those inner parks that we do want to, if possible, if there's a way to enhance that connection, make it more visible. And then for the walk score data, there was just a general question about the calculations and kind of background process that they have. The walk score, it's definitely a capital W walk score, in terms of, that's a particular organization that does do a lot of data analysis to come up with those numbers. The numbers that we had mentioned in the report, those aren't specifically EDG-created numbers. That's based on the walk score organization's calculation. So I think it was just a question of what that process is. And we can add a footnote in the report, just allowing people, kind of directing them to the walk score website that goes into their methodology and things like that in a little bit more detail.
So the maps have already been updated, based on the comments that we received. Did anyone else have any connectivity questions that they feel like we're not specifically covering right now from the summary sheet?
So, quick question, when we're just talking about connectivity in the area that you guys are master planning, right? I mean, anything outside of the master plan, we're not talking about here. Is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, but we actually, let me get back to the correct page here, Katie, so I can speak a little bit more specifically. We did have very overarching connection pieces. For example, ProMedica facility, you know, Flower Hospital is not technically in our study area. However, it's a major employment center, obviously. And it's a close enough distance, we're connecting it through multimodal facilities, is definitely worthwhile to show. So yes and no, to answer your question, we are trying to grab, you know, the high schools outside of the district, but yet connecting there, the New Elementary School, ProMedica, Kroger, all outside the district, and yet they're important to show as major destinations. So we're broadening our lens a little bit, as it relates to major destinations to connect to.
So, so like, Whetstone Park is right behind the ProMedica Health and Wellness Center on Monroe Street. So, which is a park. So I'm just wondering, did that, was that part calculated in our walk score? I mean, maybe this is too much of a tangent question, and I should just leave it alone, but I was just curious.
Two separate things. So the connectivity that we're showing in the map, which specifically is on page 23 of the report, that is just showing major regional, either existing trails, destinations, et cetera, that impact the downtown Sylvania market analysis study area. So those are just things that if you think it's important to show as a connection. So we have Veterans Memorial, Maplewood, Northview, Toledo Memorial Park, ProMedica Campus, Lord's University. So understanding those areas, the walk score is a totally separate piece. And the walk score, for better or for worse, is not something that EDG controls. They typically, even though they're citywide, they do typically base things off of your downtown, and then what is walkable in general for the entire community, as well as downtown. So, you know, typically, a good number for that is a quarter mile equals a five-minute walk, half-mile, 10-minute walk, et cetera, you build from there. The walk scores, again, are not calculated by us. We don't get to put in any information. We literally just put in the zip code, and it spits you out a number, and then why you have that score. And honestly, Sylvania is rated relatively high. You have a good rating, but it definitely, there's some gaps in there. So the biggest thing is access on bike and foot to grocery stores, schools, libraries, medical facilities, basic, you know, pharmacies, et cetera. But we, I don't know from that park versus Veterans Memorial, how they actually calculate, you know, one park over another versus its proximity to where. I'm assuming they have multiple center points that they're collecting data from, not just one big, you know, buffer zone that they're pulling from. So I don't know how to answer the question on the walk score side of it, Katie. But on the side of, if you want us to specifically call out that park within this as a major destination, we're happy to do so.
Alright, that answers my question. I mean, I don't know about Whetstone, I don't know what other people think. It just seems like it's right, almost at the end of our River Trail, and it connects the east side, like the people on the other side of the freeway a little bit more to downtown, but... I mean, I'm fine either way, I was just curious.
Just to shed some light real quick on the walk score stuff. Like Michelle mentioned, the big piece they take into account is that five-minute walk, that quarter mile. But when you, in this case, we use the intersection itself of Main and Monroe to be that center point. And it looks at all these different categories of destinations within up to a 30-minute walk time. So depending on their calculation, if they thought that the park by those, within that 30-minute walk, that would add or reduce that walk score. But it kind of looks at, you know, destinations that are within a quarter mile, it ranks that a little bit higher, and then the value for those decays a little bit as you get toward that 30-minute radius.
Alright, got it.
So the park that Katie, and I apologize, Katie, what park are you talking about?
It's Whetstone Park, and it's right behind the ProMedica Health and Wellness Center on Monroe Street. So if you go out McGregor, it ends there. And it's kind of, maybe I'd call it like the main park for the east part of Sylvania.
Okay, how does the group think about that? Do you want to add that as a destination on here?
I think it's an interesting concept. And I think, for me, I need to think it through a little bit. It feels pretty far out of our traditional, what we were thinking of. But you did just throw in Flower Hospital and Northview and all those other things. So maybe there is room for thought about it. I don't think it's bad to include other things. How much, you know, I think that's really something we're looking to you to help us understand. How much is, should we be talking about at this time? How far should we really be reaching? When do we, when do we, you know, we become so overloaded with being inclusive that we've accomplished nothing?
Well, I guess, you know, as it relates to the market analysis, the more connectivity that you have, you know, the more multimodal connectivity that you have into your downtown district, the more successful the downtown district is.
And it seems like it would make sense to keep it in there.
On the flip side of that, you know, if this were to be a trail plan or a citywide multimodal connectivity plan, we want to make sure that we are thinking about, you know, this is not a comprehensive plan by any means, this is specifically market analysis. But we know that more people on foot and bike, as well as vehicular traffic, increase business revenue and visitors, right? And people that come to spend their money. But if this was something that we were doing from a connectivity standpoint, and that was our focus, we would want to look at like rings of phasing, basically. Closest end and most impact, phase one. Then we have a next ring out of a secondary and then tertiary priority list. So I would say, from a very high level, that if we're showing it on this map as an important destination to create a walkable community, which is what that page is called, then we're kind of underlying, making an implication that that is an important connection for the success of the downtown. So, you know, is it important to connect downtown to that park? I don't know. But from a connectivity standpoint, like you said, Mary, we're already connecting to ProMedica, going from, you know, it, so I guess it depends on what angle you're looking at. But I would say, from a market analysis standpoint...
Maybe I think that helped, Michelle. What I think I heard you say, and this makes a ton of sense, it's really about connecting the people who are out there on the east side of town, getting them to come downtown, because it's walkable, more than thinking that everybody from downtown is going to go out there. They might, but...
And there's also parking, there's parking there. So, I mean, I look at it, and you think that people on that, that are closer to that park on the east side of Sylvania, if they're driving their kids in their strollers, and you can park all around that park, and then from there, it's not that far to our River Trail, to be able to walk on the trail to our downtown. And so I just look at it, like, where else would you connect to the east part of Sylvania? I mean...
Yeah, and from a connectivity standpoint, Katie, absolutely. You know, different plan, different level of detail. But, you know, people like walking to destinations to have something to do. Beer and ice cream, that's what, you know, people want to pick up something. You have a destination, especially if it's an out and back and not making a loop, you want to stop somewhere and enjoy something, whether it's dinner, ice cream cones, et cetera. You know, I think that's a really good point. So we're happy to put it on there. It's, you know, just, it is implying, though, that that is something, then, as a city, as you move forward, that means that we should be working towards that as an ultimate goal, as a key destination, and building those facilities.
And I feel like I get comments, too, from people that live over there, that like imply that we don't care about the east, and like, that doesn't even make sense. We, of course, we care. But, so that's maybe what makes me think about it, too. That it just makes our city like more connected, because the freeway kind of cuts it in half.
Sure. Well, then, from a funding standpoint, especially if you're connecting, you know, just looking, and I apologize, I'm not as familiar with that park, so I'm going to look it up. But just looking at the map and looking at the density of the homes around there, you know, connecting people to places definitely helps in grant applications. And if you do have a more, you know, kind of dense population of neighborhoods out there, that's definitely a key factor for quite a few grants that are out there. So it sounds like it's worthwhile.
And you're probably going to like think she's, I'm going way out. But if you keep going down McGregor, like all the way to Whiteford, then you're hitting Arbor Hills, which is the middle school and the two elementary schools. So, and there's even a preschool on the way. So you're hitting, McGregor is kind of like halfway in between where we are, and then to Whiteford, where there's a clump of middle school and elementary schools. But maybe that's just too much, I don't know, where I, to draw the line, but...
I'm going to guess, we're pretty zoomed out on this map, on page 23. So I'm going to guess if it's not kind of showing up on the map, which I don't believe we're, I think that's a little further out, that, you know, from a first, first ring priority, basically, I think for the purpose of the actual market analysis, probably a little far out. But if we start looking at... But if we start looking at it from an overall citywide connectivity plan, it sounds like down the road, that would be something worthwhile to look at. Because schools and, I mean, obviously, schools and residential areas and commercial areas, all connecting those together are incredibly important when you look at it from that standpoint. Okay, so we'll add that, we'll add the Wetstone Park to this page twenty-three.
Does she have a different question?
Sure.
I didn't see much mentioned about public transportation. And in our Monday City Council meeting, we did speak with the new General Manager of TARDA, our Regional Bus Transit System. And during that presentation, she showed us a sort of preview of what they might be imagining over the next few years. And I've seen reference to changing the set, well, doing analysis of ridership and rethinking the general setup of how the buses are run. And currently, we just have a couple stops along Monroe Street and a couple along Main and Haroon. But they might be switching to something where, I think they call it like a mini multi-hub system, where they have a series of hubs around the community. And I, I'm not sure how this ties into it, but seeing as we are looking into the next five to ten years or more, and that TARDA is looking at the next five to ten years, I'm not sure if it might be worthwhile having some sort of language in the document that incorporates trying to work with them a little bit on it. I'm, I don't want to overstep. And other council members, please let me know if I'm, if I'm speaking out of turn. But it, when we're talking about connectivity and multimodal, that's one of the options that I, I feel optimistic will be improving over the next few years.
Do you have those locations, Lindsay? Because as it relates to a market analysis, I think if we knew where those, but it sounds like it's maybe a little early for them to say, well, this is where we're planning these multimodal hubs. For this, the purpose of this study, if, you know, bus stops as a bus stop typically, unless they are a permanent fixture, like a Bus Rapid Transit System, a BRT system, that actually has a very formal infrastructure built around it, typically do not impact the cost of your real estate, basically. Because you can always pick up that sign or that shelter and just move it somewhere. Whereas if you have a very facility and infrastructure intense BRT system that actually feels more like a mini train station for a bus than it does a, you know, a bus stop, that will start affecting your property values, your, you know, the attractiveness of that real estate. So, unless we knew where those hubs are actually planned, if we were doing a citywide multimodal study, absolutely, we would want to incorporate that, understand ridership. But because right now, they are, I don't want to call them temporary. I understand that they're on their, as of now, permanent fixed routes. But those permanent fixed routes can change at any given moment. And because of that, they're not really playing a huge effect onto your market analysis and the results of your retail or your, your housing numbers, if that makes sense.
Yes. It might just be too soon for us to incorporate anything that they are setting their sights on.
Yeah, I mean, if we were doing a multimodal connectivity study, absolutely. We'd want to understand all of those numbers, and you know, as they're changing routes and looking at past trends and things like that of understanding, are we seeing an increased amount of ridership getting into downtown Sylvania? All of those different factors, and especially if they're using terms like, you know, a multimodal mini hub. It sounds like it's a more substantial piece of infrastructure that then, you know, you want it to be built in your streetscape. You want to make sure that your land uses around it are appropriate. Don't know that we're there yet, though.
Okay, alright. Thank you, Michelle.
But good to know. I'm glad to hear that they're thinking in those terms.
Michelle, Michelle, I just wanted to add that, I know it's a great point that Lindsay brought up. And I think sharing the information in both ways, I think we want to let TARDA know about what we're doing in this plan. And, and make sure you get the TARDA information as we move forward.
Yeah, the big thing is if they were planning on something substantial to the point of where, you know, you're talking kind of like some sort of intermodal, almost like a transfer station or something like that, you can start talking about transit-oriented development, thinking, you know, depending on how high their ridership is. But again, it sounds like that's probably a few years off. So, I don't think for purpose of this that we're really going to see any impact from a traditional bus stop. Okay, so, moving on to the development piece, we had a couple questions about the office park between the library and the fire station, if we want to potentially show that as a redevelopment area. They're intact, they're aging fairly well, but they're very, shall I say, kind of suburban style for being so close to downtown. Does anyone have any thoughts one way or the other, if we want to show this to be redeveloped?
I would show it as being redeveloped, because I think that that is a pretty key piece of land right by Ten Mile Creek and right between our main street and one of our institutions of our library. It makes sense from where I'm sitting.
I think it makes sense too, because they're way too close to the river and the parking lots are way too big. There's so much wasted property there. It's sad, the way that went in. It could have, it could have been so much better. And I don't even think they're that old, are they?
Well, they've been there.
Twenty years. There is a substantial capital loss that's already there that will be different, difficult to justify removing. However, another factor you haven't talked about is the need to extend the River Trail through to Silica. That's the only piece of the River Trail, all the way from Burger King clear out to Bay Center and eventually to Seacor Park. That's not there. And right now, it's being held up because those buildings are too close to the river. But I just, it's scary to think what it would take to take out Scott Savage's building or something like that. Those are big investments.
You need some density in there. That is something that if we, you know, we are obviously happy to show whatever you want us to show on this infill plan. But if we were to realistically consider taking that development out, it seemed to be pretty well rented. It, you know, it seems to be a pretty successful office, mini office park. So, if that is going to become something else, you're going to need some pretty heavy density in there. We're talking misuse, we're talking probably more vertical than SOMO. You definitely, you know, we have all of your numbers. You, you absolutely can add capacity, residential and some retail. I, I see that becoming a pretty substantial, pretty dense, fairly vertical, which would, of all places, be very appropriate along the river like that. But just know that it's not going to be just a couple stories. It would be a pretty substantial investment in order for, you know, the return on investment for any developer to say, okay, I'm going to take down, you know, an office park that is relatively successful, rent it out. All of that lost revenue to become something else, that something else needs to be stacked pretty high.
Very tall price. I think, Michelle, that's something we need to look at with that site, is the connectivity through it. That site holds the key, not only for the bike path to get through to Silica and tie into going west towards Bay Center Park, we also have to think about the connectivity to Lawrence University, and that site might be part of that solution as well. If we can get on that site and get a bridge across the river, tie into the Sisters' property, actually, the Sisters' property on the north side of the creek there as well. I don't know if that's in the scope of this study, but there is work to be done there to improve connectivity to the west and to Lawrence University.
Well, that's definitely something, if we're interested in it, maybe you guys sit and think about it for a couple days, especially as, you know, going through with that, with our urban design piece. We could definitely show that, I understand from a connectivity piece, that sounds like it's absolutely critical. It also doesn't necessarily have to be a Phase One recommendation. This can be something that we're, you know, the part of this infill development plan is that this, that's the visionary part. You know, your market analysis, for better or for worse, isn't the sexiest thing ever. It's, it's kind of a science-based, you know, assessment of where we are with, you know, the economic development gut check of where we think you can go. But that next piece that we haven't quite tackled yet is that visionary part. And, you know, we don't have to say that it's going to happen tomorrow, but we can show it in the future if that's something that you want us to, and we'd be happy to. I think there's a lot of things, though, that would have to be worked out to make that realistic compared to, you know, in particular, the land that you already do own downtown is obviously a quick hitter.
There's also the church that's right next to that. It's, it's kind of behind the library, but next to those buildings. And then, there's a big field behind that church. So, I mean, that could be something, but.
I was going to bring that up also. Thanks, Katie. The, the church, it's a struggling church. We have talked to them. We can talk to them again. It's a big piece of property on, would, would be on the west side of that office park development that could be right behind the library, right on Silica. It's got a lot of potential and definitely could probably gotten and, and repurposed.
If it wasn't, if it wasn't struggling, I would say, you know, let's maybe hold off on that. Because that, you know, religious institutions near a downtown definitely help with the character and walkability for that matter. But if they're having some hardships and they might close anyways, that would be a good redevelopment opportunity. And I'm sorry, Katie, I think I interrupted you.
Well, that, I mean, I think that they're, they're part of a conglomerate, if you can call it that. They're part of a group of other churches. So, and we, I guess, when, if we redevelop that, we have to keep our connectivity piece in mind. You hate to build something there, and then the building's flipped. Does it all go together? Or can it, could it happen individually? Could the piece, the property, the church happen first? And then, the other part and still work together?
Probably. I cut, I would have to, I apologize, I don't have the aerial in front of me that shows. I'm trying to picture how east of the library connects to, you know, south and west there. So, I'd have to understand what that looks like. I'm going to guess so that's a large enough piece where they probably could. But I'd have to, we'd have to look into it to understand.
It could be an amazing community space too, because there's a hill behind the library that you could use for terrace seating. You could put a stage there. There's no houses around it. It could, and then, there's all that parking because of the office buildings. And that could be a pretty cool community space too, unless it's better for development. I don't know.
I think inherently with that property, since you do have the utility lines, and they're fairly substantial electrical lines that kind of bisect the existing office property and then cut behind between the library and so many. That inherently would kind of push that to be developed in separate pieces, if not separate phases.
Yeah, thanks, Ben. Sorry, guys, my screens are all taken up with the materials for this meeting. So, I'm relying on him for my eyes right now. But that's definitely something, you know, that's the next part of this, that kind of understanding. So, we have all of these raw numbers of what housing, additional housing and additional retail were able to, you know, absorb downtown in the study area. And then, you know, that next piece is figuring out where it can apply. We've all agreed that, you know, downtown on Main, we only want to go so vertical. You know, it needs to match the character of what we have already there. And we're not looking at, you know, just raising downtown. We have an awesome, solid downtown. We want to make sure that we're infilling in a very appropriate, you know, density and verticality. But there are some areas outside of that, you know, main core district that can have some density. And where you're talking about is it. And that's the part where we have to understand, do we actually have enough demand where that density is in demand? And it's, you know, that return on investment can be there. And that's kind of that next step. Okay, so for the missing middle, there were some questions about what that was. And we just added, we just clarified that in the report and just kind of put that statement of what missing middle housing actually is. So, that is clarified, and Ben, that's already updated, correct? Okay. Alright, so, all of the items that, we had a lot of ideas thrown out about just things that people wanted to see, you know, specific park space recommendations, where we could have some gateway features, you know, what we can do with the A's hardware sites. You know, those are all items that we would love to explore with you when we get into the infill development piece. But for better or for worse, you know, we're not there yet. So, there was quite a few questions that we kind of have that, I guess, in our notes on the backside, we're like, oh, we'll get there. You know, we'll get there, we'll get there. But, you know, for this phase, just for the actual market analysis piece, anything that involves kind of redevelopment of particular parcels or visions for particular areas is something that we'd be doing in this next phase. So, with that, does anyone have any, I guess, additional questions or comments or things that we haven't covered? Or if you had comments or questions that you submitted to us that you feel that we didn't cover?
Did you see the previous downtown parking study that we had performed? Okay.
Michelle, why don't you give a summary of what the next phase would be? I mean, we're looking at under twenty-five thousand dollars or so authorized. We've built it into our budget, which is under stress, and council is going to decide about that. But tell us what we would expect if we give you authorization to proceed.
Sure. It was just under twenty-four thousand. So, the big piece that we have is that we basically start off, you know, there's public involvement associated with this phase. It is up to this group as to when we want to insert that public involvement. At the beginning of the urban design process, towards the end of it, that we're very flexible in that. And we've seen it work well all the way through the entire design process. So, that one's kind of a flexible given, where we're not saying that it works only in one form or another. So, the big thing that we start with is kind of a brainstorming, a much more specific brainstorming session of kind of understanding, we'll bring in a couple hand sketches of basically laying out the different uses that your downtown is showing that you have capacity for, which is quite a bit of housing and a decent amount of retail that is supported by that additional housing. We know that SOMO is going in, so we have that great momentum going. So, we bring in these two different sketches, and they're just black and white to scale hand sketches that show different redevelopment areas. And that's really where, you know, for example, we talked about creating that bridge going over to the cemetery. Or do we want to make the, show that property behind the lib, or I'm sorry, the church by the library? Does that become open space, or is that residential development, you know, kind of townhomes or something? We start mixing and matching. So, while we only bring in two options, you guys will be going in saying, oh, I like this from, you know, option A, and I want to take this from option B, and let's swap all these things out. But we basically go in and do that through, hopefully, it's an in-person meeting at that point and not via screen sharing. Then, we actually go in and we will take one of, you know, one of those plans, incorporate all the recommendations and changes, kind of give you one final hand sketch that shows all of those modifications, get your blessing on it of, yeah, that's what we talked about. And then, actually take it into a full-blown 3D model and start showing from a visionary standpoint and from a, you know, to-scale 3D model of what that starts looking like. So, and from that 3D model, that's where we get our illustrative renderings from. So, if it was decided that that office park in between the fire station and library, that would be a fantastic before and after of showing what it is now versus a potential, you know, residential and/or mixed-use development, or, you know, a more vertical office structure with other uses, something like that. So, we'd be putting all of that together for you. You'd be getting at least five illustrative renderings from it. But then, we'll actually get into some of your specifics from that as far as, we call it development breakdown matrix of better understanding what the different development potentials are for your final, your final recommended conceptual redevelopment. We start breaking it down for you via, you know, sector, square footage, number of units. It's just so you really understand kind of what your additional capacity is. And then, we're getting into some tax increment financing analysis. And going back to the historic designation. financing analysis. And going back to the historic designation, if you guys were all sitting here saying you're gung ho about historic designation, we would start looking at, in that TIF analysis, some capital stacking and just understanding, well, okay, we can implement a TIF district. Here's your baseline tax right now. This is what we're seeing as an increase. Here's the additional income that we're projecting over the next so many years. And then if you were to layer in historic tax credits for the infill in downtown, here's some potential new revenue that could potentially be applied. But we, we do for this project, start getting into some baseline TIF analysis as it relates to, if you were to designate this entire area as a TIF, what type of dollars we can be working with for general infrastructure that you're going to need to, that you're needing to invest in, especially from a sense that if you're wanting parks and open space, something that the city typically would pay for. And a big trend that we're seeing right now in northern Ohio is that communities are, you know, definitely having to go into public-private partnerships and pay for utility upgrades, extensions, things like that. Developers are willing to pay for certain things and only so much, but it would give us a better understanding of, you know, what type of revenue could be generated if you were to TIF your future improvements. And all of those numbers, again, are based off of your market analysis and then your infill development, redevelopment. Does that answer your question, Mayor, as far as kind of our process as we typically?
Michelle?
Mayor, we can't hear you. Yes.
Michelle, if the, if, if council authorizes the next step, how long would all of that take?
Um. A couple to a few months. I mean, it's, it's not a long, I mean, we can, we can crank, we can get moving on it immediately. So the bigger thing, honestly, is just getting the meeting set in the calendar, knowing where we are now. You know, I think a lot of people are still trying to avoid in-person meetings in June. So just kind of, if we're wanting to do a public meeting and aiming for that to be in person and wanting to do our stakeholder client meeting in person, I think we'd want to develop a schedule around not so much our availability to be able to get the work done, but are we aiming for a timeframe that we're all really hoping, even if we are wearing masks, that we're all willing to be in the same room? But yeah, from a timing standpoint at EDG side, you know, we, we definitely have the capacity to start working on this immediately. So the workload itself, if you take out those meetings and the timing of those meetings, it's a couple of months of worth of work for us.
I have a question.
That's for the public. We don't, we don't have a crystal ball better than anybody else. Whether, when people are going to be comfortable doing that, probably the longer we can wait into the summer, the better. But to do it before the fall probably makes more sense because I think we're going to have a hard fall. I'm sorry, Katie, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. So back to the, the ICSC, what you're going to do for us in the next few months, is that something that we could actually, a document that we could take to the ICSC and people would take us seriously?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yep. Yeah, that's, I mean, the big thing for ICSC, if you guys are interested in it, I kind of call it speed dating, I guess. You typically don't go in blind, though, to that conference. If that's something that you are interested in, we would have a, you know, you'd take this as a formal package, but you really should be setting up those meetings ahead of time. You can walk up, but just like any conference, you know, when I have, when our company's at a conference, I might not be at the booth at any given time. You know, my colleagues, depending on, you know, we always have someone there, but it might not be just the right person. So if you're very interested in either a specific developer or retailer boutique chain, something like that, we need to contact them ahead of time. And we set up an appointment. And typically, they'll do it at their booth, depending on who they are. Sometimes they have outside things or separate meeting rooms and things like that. But a lot of it happens right there. You just need to be proactive about it. And yes, this is the exact type of material. You want the image, you want the vision to show that the city is organized, ready, willing and able to move forward. And then, you know, your raw data showing that you have a market and you have room in your downtown for additional development.
Great. That makes sense. Thank you.
As of now, it sounds like they're trying to reschedule for October, November. But based on what we're seeing from flight cancellations, I'm not sure that they're going to be able to do that. Does anyone else have any questions?
Can I ask?
Go ahead, Kay.
No, you go first. You're good.
I, I actually, I actually was going to move to try and kind of get some feedback from Bill and, and then move forward with next steps. So why don't you ask your questions? Let's make sure all the questions are on the table first.
So this is, again, a tangent question. I wonder if you, I listened to a Place in Maine webinar yesterday, Joe Borgstrom, and he was talking about how CBD, CDBG money, there might be more availability because of COVID to help cities deal with things that need to change. I'm just wondering if you have any insights on that? Or if, if you see something, if we could jump on it? I don't know.
Um, what I, I have not heard that there's going to be additional CDBG dollars available. However, if there are, that's one that I haven't heard of, then yeah, this is definitely something that you're going to want to look into from a redevelopment standpoint. The other piece is the one advice that I can give is that we are hearing that there's going to be, you know, some significant stimulus dollars coming through ODOT. So if you guys have any major projects, whether they're roadway, kind of like ARA way back in 2008, the reinvestment stimulus package, we are hearing that they need to be shovel-ready, that it'd be very helpful if you already had the right of way. But economic and economic development is a big piece of it. So it's supposed to be circling back to something that improves jobs, economy, et cetera. So for downtown, you're talking streetscapes, you're talking, I mean, you can do basic roadway resurfacing because it is a downtown. You can also look at larger projects. But we're going to be seeing, I believe it's in tune of, I know it's over $100 million. It's basically making up for the, and I apologize, I don't have the exact number in my head. For some reason, 107 million is coming to mind, but I don't think that's accurate. But it is making up for the gap in gasoline tax that we are missing out on from going driving right now. So that is coming to the pipeline. So on a, on a larger scale, you know, understanding, if you have projects like that, I would definitely think, you know, to make sure that you guys are talking about what those dollars could potentially go to.
You know, I do think we're fortunate that you mentioned that. I suspect that Kevin Allerpie is very much aware of that opportunity, you know, in the offing as well. One of the things that I know I saw from one of the council members was something about your feedback on the Summit Street area. And certainly that would probably come into the next stage in terms of additional conversation. But you didn't even comment about it here. So maybe it's in the bottom section. No. So I just wondered if you have any high-level comments about Summit Street and whether you think it's really a viable place for development in the future?
I think the bigger thing for us, the way that we look at it is a little, it might seem a little bit backwards, but we take your, your results of your market analysis and basically, it's almost like a puzzle, like figure out where it can fit, you know, because your project is an infill development project. We're not dealing with a greenfield. So understanding, you know, where we have legitimate buildings that we really don't want to touch versus where we have some buildings that could potentially, you know, are either outdated, underutilized, tearing down. I apologize, Mary, I don't know that I can answer that question yet. We really need to understand where it applies and where the best places for those infill developments are occurring. And it could be there. I mean, you know, we don't have that many opportunities on Main Street itself. So we're going to have to be looking at the surrounding immediate areas to understand where that appropriate infill needs to go.
That's fine. I, again, just want to make sure that the things that I saw come across in terms of questions were at least commented on. And that's something I just wanted to make sure. I don't even remember who had originally asked that. So I would just invite if any council members have additional questions or are looking for additional feedback, maybe one last round on that. Patrick, you've got something? No. So I think that our next steps will be, Michelle, we will have to have a decision about whether we move forward. And I think the council members will likely discuss that at the next meeting. And I, I don't have an exact, I don't have a next meeting scheduled for that conversation with council members. So we'll need to make sure we put that in place. And certainly, I think the mayor was clear that, like everyone else we're sitting at this moment in time. So I think we have to make a very thoughtful decision about timing. And if, if it's an urgent timing now, move forward, or if there's any reason that we should put a, a little slowdown on this process. I think those will become decisions of council that we'll talk about at a later date. Overall, I think the feedback I received from council members is everybody felt really happy with this at first step. I think you did a lot this round to help us understand the difference between market analysis and the next step. I think you still see us, or me anyway, kind of mixing those two up a little bit. But I think I'm optimistic that at some point we won't want to move forward with the next step because we certainly want to be thoughtful in making decisions about the future of our fabulous community. So with that, I'm going to, unless you've got other comments, Michelle or Bill. Bill, anything from you?
Yeah, it's just a couple of comments. Thanks, Mary. Michelle, I made some notes and I'll definitely, definitely communicate those to you, you know, from the discussion today. But my question, so the document that we, that you have given us to, you know, to study before this meeting, is that being updated? But you alluded to that a couple of times. So, so we'll have a new version of what you've given us already.
Yes, correct.
Good. Okay. I just wanted to make sure on, on that. And then, as Mary said, then we, there'll be a meeting and then we'd, we'd be getting back to you. I'll see if, Mayor, is there something else you want to add on this note? That's, that's all I had at this time.
Does the mayor want to add anything, Bill?
He's, he's okay at this point.
Michelle, I wonder if you could send over your synopsis. Okay, okay. I wonder if you could send over your synopsis and your discussion points for us, too. Selfishly for me, as much as anything else for the minutes that I'll prepare in regard to this meeting. But I think it could be helpful for other council members to have it in their hands as well. You could send it to Bill and he can pass it on.
Yeah, that's what I thought about, that we've been recording this. So as soon as I close this out, within a few hours, we will get a full transcript.
Yeah, so that's great. All right. So at this point in time, hearing no other questions, I would ask if there's a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Patrick moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Katie's second. And so it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting at, for today. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and this meeting stands adjourned at 2:10. Thank you so much for your time and your energy on this. Bye, all.
Thank you. We appreciate your time and it's been great working with you all on this project.
Thanks, Michelle. Great job. Thanks, Ben.
It is.
Bye, all.